Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice this meeting was given December 8th, 2023. This meeting will convene at 6:00 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentations they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at those meetings. Agenda items are subject to reordering in the discretion of the board president. Please attend the Pursuant to Section 8414111 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular board meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Education Service Unit Number 19 will be held Monday, January 8, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Tentative will be scheduled at the Board Meeting Room at the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. Please visit our website, www OPS.org for the confirmed location on Friday, January 5. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 841412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is published in the back of the room near the entrance. Please stand and join us for the presentation of the colors and the pledge of allegiance presented by the Westview High School, JROTC.
Hey, colors! Heart, pride, march! Colors, full! Center, face! Post, the colors!
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forward, march! Center, face!
Please be seated. Thank you. Vice President Smith, can you please lead us in the vision and mission?
The vision: every student, every day, prepare for success. And the mission: to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Thank you. Dr. McFarland, roll call, please.
Erdenberger.
Here.
Foal.
Here.
Head.
Present.
Holman.
Present.
Juarez. Krackey.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Teelin.
Here.
Cassidy.
Here.
Eight, present.
Thank you. And do we have a motion to excuse Ms. Juarez's absence?
So.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All right. Motion by Ms. Erdenberger, second by Dr. Holman. Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Did she?
Yes, sorry. She did let me know she wouldn't be here.
Foal.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Krackey.
Smith.
Aye.
Teelin.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Eight, aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Mr. Masco with the school spotlight.
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the Board, and Interim Superintendent Ray. Tonight's OPS Proud Spotlight recognizes students who are National Merit semifinalists. And to begin, I'm very happy to welcome the Central High Principal, Dion Kirksey.
Good evening. Thank you. I would like to introduce my young people. Brayden Simpson, can you come up? Lachlan O'Keefe and Lucy Rollinson. I would have them just give a little introduction and just kind of tell what this process was. What I do appreciate, even though this recognition is for Central kids, this really is an OPS win. So on behalf of Central High School, the staff and the administrators, I'd like to thank you for this spotlight. And I just want my young people just to tell a little bit about themselves.
Good evening. My name is Brayden Simpson. I'm a senior at Central High School. I was awarded the National Merit semifinalist. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking to pursue a future in architecture. I have not decided on a college yet, but I am looking to study general architecture and study musicals.
I'm Lachlan O'Keefe. I'm a senior at Central High School. I plan to pursue engineering. I'm in the IB program at Central. Yeah, don't know what college I'm going to do yet, but getting those applications back soon.
Hi, I'm Lucy Rollinson. I'm a senior, and I'm not sure where I want to go to college, but I think I'm going to major in biochemistry.
So again, thank you for this opportunity. And again, this is not just a win for Central High School, but it is actually a win for the Omaha Public Schools. Thank you.
Principal Kirksey, thank.
Yeah, Principal Kirksey, thank you so much. And students, congratulations. Do we have any questions, colleagues?
Ms. Erdenberger?
I just wanted to make sure you got this award in time to put it on your applications to college. Is that a yes from everybody? Okay, good. Congratulations. It's a very important thing to be able to add, so congratulations.
Any other questions, colleagues? Well, congratulations again. We couldn't be prouder of all that you've accomplished. So please, please join us in giving the students and Ms. Kirksey a round of applause. Yeah, and if you wouldn't mind just coming around, we can, I'll shake your hand and All right, moving on to Board and Superintendent Communications. Mr. Ryan for the treasurer's report.
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the Board, and Interim Superintendent Ray. The financial statements for the period ended October 31st, 2023, have been finalized and submitted for your review. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ray?
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the Board and our community. Tonight's staff will review how we're investing and monitoring the use of federal ESRS funds. ESRS stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. Its three phases began in 2021. We have completed Phase One. We allocated Phase Two funds. Reimbursements are underway. Phase Three funds, as a reminder, expire September 2024. In each phase, we targeted resources towards student achievement, staff retention and recruitment, and addressing long-term needs like eligible facility projects. Federal guidelines direct how schools, districts can use ESRS funds. These projects require daily coordination across teams throughout the district. It demonstrates focus, alignment, efficient work, while carefully tracking progress. I want to thank our accounting and finance team and everyone involved in this district-wide effort. I also want to especially thank Joseline Perkins for all of her work with ESRS. Their combined proactive work anticipated challenges and had solutions ready to go. Four times a year, we feature ESRS in action, stories showing the benefits in our classrooms. They are posted in the District News section of OPS.org and each school homepage. A copy of tonight's Student and Staff Achievement Report will be posted tomorrow to all school and district homepages under Announcements. One addition, congratulations are in order to the District Communications Team, which earned an Award of Excellence from the Public Relations Society of America, Nebraska Chapter. The award recognized the Omaha Public Schools Comprehensive Communication Plan for the 2022-23 school year. In anticipation of this being our last board meeting at North High School, I want to thank the entire North High staff who has made this happen. I also want to thank everyone else from the sound team and the team that helped set up and break down each of these board meetings. It was a lot to make this effort travel, and I feel like we did it successfully. The team made it happen. That concludes my remarks for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Board comments. We'll start at the left. Ms. Krackey?
I have a couple of things I want to talk about, and one of them was an article in The World Herald on Sunday, December 3. It was about cursive writing making a comeback in some US schools. And it went on to say, and I've been a supporter always, it said that there's, they recently have had some success in bringing it back, pointing to studies that show a link between cursive and cognitive abilities, including helping with reading and writing disabilities such as dyslexia and digraphia. And I hope I pronounced that one right. The one that's shown here is the Zainer Blozer, and that's the one that we, I think we're more successful with when we use that one. I liked it better. Today, in maintaining, they talked about at a university, learn cursive is an important test for cognitive development. Cursive helps to train the brain to learn functional specialization. That is the capacity for optimal efficiency. And then in 219, there was a study, and it was published in, listed in the National Library of Medicine, found that there is increasing evidence that mastering handwriting skills play an important role on academic achievement. And a 220 study from researchers in Norway made the direct connection between writing by hand and synchronized activity in particular parts of the brain important for memory and for the encoding of new information, and therefore provides the brain with optimal conditions for learning. And it went on to say, the study recommended that all forms of writing, printing, cursive, and typing be taught to strengthen both cognitive development and learning efficiency. And furthermore, it said that means that centuries of historical documents are written in cursive, and historians have to be able to read it to do original research. And that's another reason that it pointed out why it was important. Our young people are missing out on so much, she said. All of the founding documents are written in cursive. Where is our history if we can't read this? Are we depriving future generations of our history? And because I'm such an advocate of it, and I enjoy teaching it so much to children, and they did enjoy learning it. So anytime we want to return and have a, maybe give a couple of classes, a chance to do it and try it, that would be a step to see how does that go. And I'll be there to draw the circles and all those things on the board if you let me come. And the next thing is, I wanted to comment about visiting the schools and going to the programs. And the great attendance that comes with Christmas programs or winter programs is just terrific. There wasn't any room at all at Beveridge. And the speech therapist was the person taking charge because the principal was ill that night. He did such a phenomenal job. He was all over the place, getting chairs out and ushering people to their seats. And I just have never seen anything like that. I mean, he, he was just terrific. And furthermore, he knew who I was. That's a big coup, because mostly people don't know who you are. And he introduced me, and I thought that was so kind. And I went on to, to others also. And I just noticed that we do have grandparents coming, and I want to encourage them to come. They, they love the programs, and we love to have them. And I, some people who aren't doing them in the winter, they will be doing a spring or some other time that they will have parents. And they have had them in for all singing or something like that. So I like to call attention to our schools and what a good job they're doing with our winter programs.
Thank you, Ms. Erdenberger.
Thank you, Mr. Head. I do want to support what Mrs. Krackey said. She has been the cursive champion for as long as I've known her. And I have to admit, when I saw this article in the paper a couple of weeks ago, I knew that we would be hearing from you. With respect to the winter programs, I attended the one at JP Lord today, which was particularly special. And a huge shout out, I'm sorry, she's going to make it, to their music therapist, Erin Singh. She did a fantastic job with all of those students and presented a program that was just very heartwarming and fun. So, and speaking of winter programs, I think that means that we may only have about seven days of school left. So a huge shout out to everybody, everybody that gets their kids to school, that meets them when they get there, that is putting curriculum together at the TAC building. At the beginning of August, it looks like it's never going to come. So I'm just, shout out to everybody that powered through, and I hope everyone has a happy holiday.
Thank you. Ms. Foal?
Thank you, and good evening. I just wanted to shine a little spotlight on another student and also just talk about how I visited the progressive student group at Central and was able to speak with several of their students about the school board, about educational issues on the state and the city level. And it was a really great opportunity for me to interact with the students. So thank you for, or thank you to Jane McGill, who I believe is the president of the organization. And also, I just wanted to shine a spotlight on her because a great article was written by her, by the Women's Fund of Omaha, and the person who authored it was Sarah Wenkert. And it was about Jane's role as a student journalist at Central and all of the great contributions that she's offered to their student newspaper, The Register. And so I just wanted to read the first, like, paragraph of the article to just kind of give you an idea of who Jane is. So Jane McGill is your typical high school senior, except for her mighty pen and journalism superpowers. At just 18 years old, this whip-smart, award-winning force is ready to be reckoned with, as she and her peers prepare to reckon with a world in need of remedy and renewal. "My generation is coming of age in a time of incredible social upheaval," says McGill, noting exponential threats like climate change, the war in Ukraine with its accompanying nuclear threat, political extremism, systematic racism laid bare, and uncertainty surrounding artificial intelligence. "I think when young people look around the world, there is this deep desire motivated by the number of social and ecological issues we face to do something. I think we're incredibly motivated to engage constructively and fix a broken world." And I encourage everybody to read that article. It's a great example of, she notes, the journalism program at Central is really what motivated her and inspired her to take this opportunity into college and become a journalist. So I think it's just a great example of the great things we're able to do at OPS. I also wanted to note that I will be stepping down as the Legislative Committee Chair. I'm stepping down for a couple different reasons, but the biggest one is that I will be taking on a new job role in my professional career. And so trying to do that and chair the Legislative Committee, which I would argue is the hardest committee to chair, especially during the legislative session, is just a little bit too hard for me to take on at this point. So I will be stepping down, and I believe Ms. Erdenberger has become the chair, which I couldn't be more happy about. And I look forward to still engaging on legislative issues. I also wanted to talk about just one other thing, and I noted it at the last school board meeting as well, that I would be requesting an agenda item be placed on our board agenda about the implementation of LB 632, which is, we call it the suspension bill, but it's basically just saying that OPS and metropolitan schools cannot suspend preschoolers through second graders in our schools. And it has been noted to me by several different entities, people, friends, teachers, administrators, even students themselves, that it has become an issue in their classroom, and it has been a major disruption. And so the reason that I requested that agenda item is so the board can be briefed about what is happening and what we are doing about it, because I believe it's incredibly important for, you know, the board and the district to fulfill its legislative obligations, because it is a law that we are obligated to follow. And so that's why I asked for it to be on the agenda. It was denied by our board president, Spencer Head, but I am not deterred. I'm going to be asking the rest of my board members for their support to get this as an agenda item, so we can all be briefed, aware, and the community can be made aware as well. And that's about all. Thank you.
Dr. Holman?
Thank you.
Eighth grade girl swimmers who just had their city finals last Friday. They all put forth tremendous effort. It was really great to see them all there, all the students from all the different schools. And also shout out to all the amazing coaches who dedicated their time in helping the girls throughout this entire season. It was at Burke High School, standing room only, and then also, even though there was a basketball game on the other side, we still had parents at the top of the risers on the other side looking in to see, because there were so many people there. So again, congratulations to everyone and looking forward to next season.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. One, thank you to all the staff and students who participated in the Empowerment Networks Educational Summit over the past weekend. Being able to identify the progress and the areas of growth that we've been able to attain as a district, it really makes me OPS proud. And the students being able to voice their opinions and concerns on what it is they need just in order to be successful. I think it's a great opportunity for us to be able to continue to collaborate and work and push our district in the right direction. So again, thank you to all the staff people who were a part of that and making it a success. Then next, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to the Monroe inaugural dance team. This was the first time that these young ladies were able to perform at basketball games on the seventh and eighth grade level. They did a great job. They have some great coaches who are very dedicated to work with the young girls after school. And then this is a great component of parent engagement, because we had a lot of parents who really came out to not just support the boys who were playing basketball, but the young ladies who were being student athletes as well. So shout out to Monroe Junior High.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment before we move on? All right, moving on to public comment. The next item is public comment. We have three speakers who have submitted requests to be heard forms. The Board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers for a maximum of five minutes. We ask you to respect that time limit. Dr. McFarland will let you know when you have one minute remaining, when you have 30 seconds remaining. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Dr. McFarland know, and one will be provided. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Dr. McFarland know, and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about. We ask that you request the opinions of all who speak and refrain from applause or outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not identify the student or staff member and instead provide that information to Dr. McFarland. She will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Dr. McFarland. She will make sure each member of the board gets copy. As a reminder, Nebraska revised statute 841412 requires that any member of the public desiring to address the board identify yourself, including an address and name of any organization you may represent, unless that requirement is waived for security reasons. And we don't have anyone requesting a waiver tonight. So again, please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you're representing any particular organization. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until being called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have any materials to distribute, please let Dr. McFarland know, and she will get them from you. It is now 6:25 p.m., and our first speaker is John Morrissey.
Thank you very much. My name is John J.O.H.N. Morrissey, M.O.R.R.I.S.S.E.Y. I live in West Omaha, 17171 Shirley Street, and I have a godson who goes to Central High School. And I'm here tonight with good news. I'd like to sing the praises and shine a spotlight, as you did, on the Omaha Public Schools Career Center and its program director, Jeremy Nielsen. My godson started at Central High School three years ago. First year of his freshman year, COVID, spent time at home, didn't handle it very well. At the beginning of his sophomore year, we consulted with the Central High Counseling Department. You said not to mention any names, but the counseling department there is absolutely wonderful. And a counselor who learned that my godson is a self-professed car guy said, let's apply to the auto program at the OPS Career Center. So we did, he was accepted, and the rest is history. He has treasured his time and classes at the Omaha Public Schools Career Center, and it even spurred him on to study more for his academic classes at Central High, where he made the honor roll and has continually made the honor roll. And it's given him a renewed purpose for his life. This is really big, and I just thought that you needed to know that. This year, as a senior at the Career Center, he won an internship at the Baxter Ford Service Department in Omaha, where he works every afternoon after attending school in the morning. He just found out from his boss at Baxter that he can apply for a scholarship at the Ford Motor Program at Southeast Community College in Milford, Nebraska. He'll be touring the campus during the holiday season. Now, I know you know everything about four-year colleges, two-year colleges. I just wanted to shine a spotlight on two-year colleges. I'm an educator myself. I Googled community colleges, and it turns out that quite a few famous people have attended them. Forrest Gump actor Tom Hanks attended the Chabot Community College in Hayward, California. Rapper actress Queen Latifah attended the New York Borough of Manhattan Community College. And Steve Jobs attended DeAnza Community College in Cupertino, California, before starting a little company that he called Apple. So that brings me back to, I could go on and on with examples there, but we don't have to. I want to get in under my five minutes. This brings me back to Jeremy Nielsen and the OPS Career Center. Jeremy told me that the Career Center's mission is to connect today's students with tomorrow's careers through relevant, real-world education that engages students, community, and industry. He added that the OPS Career Center staff works hard to be the number-one choice for community and industry partners for developing and delivering training programs that build a quality workforce. Well, I'm here tonight to tell you that that mission is working as a family member of a student here at OPS. The OPS Career Center has given this young man a renewed sense of direction in his life, just as it has done for hundreds of other students, as I'm sure you know. I'm here tonight to thank you, the OPS Board of Education, for your continued support of the Career Center, and I will continue to sing the praises of this most worthwhile OPS program. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Larry Anderson.
My name is Larry Anderson, and I live at 20108 Maple Street in Gretna, Nebraska, in Sarbee County. I do have a statement to read.
Sorry, real quick, if you could spell your name as well.
Yes, L.A.R.R.Y. And then A.N.D.E.R.S.O.N. Thank you. I was just noticing here before I get started that the vision is every student, every day, prepared for success, and that the mission is to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life. So good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak in front of the Omaha Public School Board. With Dr. Siobhan Holman's help and impartial compassion, I came here after making the decision to speak tonight. So I thank you, Dr. Holman. We spoke a few months ago. As a graduate of OPS, I feel it is an axiom that public schools need our support, such support that was afforded me by the many teachers that contributed to my worldview and helped to make me the man I am today. Those educators embodying the very courageous and positive approach to life I have, no matter the circumstances, from Ms. Stewart, Donald Dean, Mr. Arnold Epstein, to Mr. Steven Bros, Robert Kane, and lastly, Mr. Alfred DiMaro. These educators have left a lasting impression on me. They're only a handful of the talented and engaged public school teachers by whom I was lucky enough to be taught. Thank you, Mrs. Wilkie, I think. There are those in my complete list, however, that have had a lasting effect on me that I don't hold in the same regard, and there is one in particular that I hold in the greatest of contempt. I'm a man who believes in naming names, shining a light into the dark corners to root out those serial abusers that heretofore have remained in secret. Perhaps living in the anonymity afforded an elected official who holds office for a district in which they never talked. I turned 60 last month. I look pretty good. But I must admit, being in this former teacher's presence, as I have on some other occasions, I am immediately transformed back into that nine-year-old boy, as so many victims of abuse have reported as happening. That nine-year-old boy whose name was inscribed on a chalk-drawn dunce cap. That little boy who had his name placed on a chalk-drawn doghouse, all done during class to point out a wrong answer given. That nine-year-old child whose mother made numerous attempts to deal with the manufactured situations created by this serial abuser, both in face-to-face discussions and meetings with principal at the time, Dr. Robert Schulze. In my day, though, we kind of lived under the whole rub some dirt on it and walk it off approach to abuse. We believed authority figures had good reason to be the way they were.
One minute.
And not considered it out of the ordinary today. This abuser would be able to be considered just that, an abuser, giving the public embarrassment and a singularity of scorn and seem to delight in the effect it had on me and their other victims at the time of the abuse. I will refrain from giving other examples.
30 seconds.
By this time, I might assume that this abuser realizes I'm addressing this board about her, as I have mentioned some of her resume. If not, allow me to be candid. That abuser is Nancy Kretke. And she is a serial abuser. Her legacy of emotional abuse has remained hidden and either denied or passed off, as another principal of Hartman Elementary told me, her name was Mrs. Paner. I'm aware of her behavior, but...
Time.
Our next speaker is Justin Riddle.
With that assessment, I've known Nancy for years, and I think she's fantastic. Everybody else here, though, there's a different story. I'm Justin Riddle, J to the U to the S to the T to the I to the N to the R to the I to the D to the D to the L to the E, because we can't spell. 16422 to the Patrick Avenue. Got it? Cool. So no new hand dryers in the bathrooms, and it turns out from the students, most of these bathrooms don't work in this school half the time. What's wrong with you folks? Does nobody care? Am I the only person who talks to the students? You said you did, but geez, you're talking about climate change and global warming. God, that's something we're all facing today. So, oh, about this, I didn't actually make a speech, because it doesn't matter. None of you listen, but I got something great for you here in a minute. I don't know if your guys' attorney talked to you today yet. Not yet. Perfect. They probably don't even know. But with the superintendent search, is anybody gonna tell us how that's going or how it actually works or who's being sampled or anything like that? Or are we gonna do it in disguise like everything else that we've done? Just curious. We like disguising things here as the school board. I watch a lot of school boards. I saw one yesterday where a whole bunch of people were super upset about some lady as an adult that had a threesome, but these are the same people going, I have to tell my kids about a threesome, that go, hey, we should have books in our schools that teach kids about threesomes. Yeah, I know. Everything like that is with you folks. Sorry. No, I'm not sorry, because it's true. I'm getting to the best part. The news. The news. Omaha, Nebraska, we've got 60,000 students and a $700 million budget, and the news doesn't ever show up here. Why is that? I know why, because you guys hide everything, and they hide it with you. I'm addressing that, too, and I think you guys know that, don't you? Your face, man. So now I'm gonna get to the best part, because I actually really like you guys. And since I like you so much, you know what I'm gonna do? I'm gonna print out these books, and I'm gonna walk door to door in my district, and I'm gonna run for school board, and win, lose, or draw, you're the one that's gonna be going against me, and your name is gonna be plastered right on those pictures that you allowed. How's that sound? Then I'll be able to sit with you guys every day, and guess what I won't do? The same stupid things that you guys do, which is hide from the public. I've been coming here for three years. None of you have chosen to answer one single question, so guess what? I'm gonna come join you, and then I'm gonna let the public know exactly what's going on. I'm gonna start questioning the weird expenditures that you guys pull off while letting these kids in this very school that we're standing in not be able to use a bathroom and have to go two floors down because you're so focused on climate change. How about help the kids that are here? How about care about your constituents? And how about look forward to when I sit there next to you instead of Mr. President Head, who has also done nothing? I thought one time, three years ago, when you made one vote, the only time I've seen anybody vote against the crowd, that you actually were gonna do something. Now you sit here as the president, and you do nothing. How does it feel to be so scared to answer my questions that you have to sit here and look like cowards every single...
One minute.
Meeting? Guess who's not a coward? Me. Guess why? Because the questions I'm asking are true. I've proven them. They're factual, and what did you guys do? Twice, you called the cops. They called me. They determined I was cool. Then Ms. Holman decided to get a restraining order, but guess who you guys refused to allow to testify? Both the school resource officers that called me.
30 seconds.
Interesting. The people that had the most control and knew exactly what was going on wouldn't testify. You can look at me however you want. Did I say anything false? Nope. Fun, right? We're gonna have fun, and I'm gonna join you guys up there, and it's gonna be a whole new world. Because I can't be bought or tricked or beaten or convinced to do something stupid.
Time.
Moving to consent agenda. At this time, any board member may request that an item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and considered and voted separately. Do we have any motions to remove? I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda this before us.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tealyn. Do we have any abstentions?
Yes, President Head, I need to abstain from item I-9, which is Claim C for my role on the OPS Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other abstentions? All right, so we have Ms. Cassidy remaining, or abstaining, sorry, from item I-9. Any other comment? Not, Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Foll.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Krackey.
Smith.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Adai.
Motion carries. Moving to information items. Item J-1A, financial update on elementary and secondary school emergency relief grant funds. Mr. Ryan?
Good evening, President Head, Vice President Smith, members of the board, interim superintendent Ray. Thank you for some time to provide a brief update on the status of the ESER grant programs this evening. Overall, the district has been awarded $304.2 million in federal funding for emergency elementary, secondary school emergency relief funds. These were awarded in three different waves, with the original ESER grant being for $23.2 million early on in 2020, followed by the ESER II grant of $86.4 million later in 2020. And finally, the largest and most significant portion of the activity, the ESER III grant, awarded in 2021 for $194.6 million. We have fully expended all $23.2 million of the ESER I grant. Those funds expired on September 30 of 2022, and we have been fully reimbursed for all of the activities covered under that program. The ESER II grant funds totaling $86.4 million expired on September 30, 2023 this year. We've fully obligated and expended those funds and have submitted all claims to the Nebraska Department of Education, and they are currently in the process of reviewing the final reimbursement claim, and we anticipate receiving reimbursement for that around late December or early January after providing any additional information they require for substantiating the expenses. The ESER III grant program expires at September, excuse me, September 30, 2024. We have spent just over a quarter of those funds, $56.4 million, and we fully expect to obligate all of the funds by the September 30 deadline and expend them and liquidate them by the January 31, 2025 liquidation date to fully pay the invoices. Later on in the presentation, I'll go over some contingencies related to that, but at this point in time, we feel all projects covered under that program are on track. You'll notice that we still have significant unreimbursed amounts from the ESER grant program. The Nebraska Department of Education is working very... The Nebraska Department of Education is working very diligently on reviewing all claims that have been submitted to this point in time, but September 30 is the typical grant close period for most federal grants, and all 244 school districts in the state have to submit final reimbursement requests for all of the grant programs they have underway. And with the small staff at NDE, it does take some time to get through all of those claims. So we have provided all the information that we feel is necessary for them to review those claims. They are working through that, and as questions arise, we react and submit information to them upon their request. We fully anticipate all expenditures to date to be fully reimbursed at this point in time. As I noted, all of the ESER III grant programs have been fully expended and we're in the process of getting the final reimbursement. You'll notice there were some budget fluctuations between some of the amounts. The staff retention stipends required an additional $3.75 million over the originally approved budget. That was within the budget tolerances on the NDE grant programs, and so we did not bring an amendment to you for your approval, knowing that that would flow through the NDE program, and we had briefed you on that expected overage in the past. The most significant savings were in internet connectivity for the student devices. That helped to cover some of the overage in the staff stipends. And then the largest surplus in the program was with next level learning curriculum. We had originally identified next level learning as a great opportunity to help augment the summer school program and utilize the ESER funds. Before year two started, we identified that it was more beneficial for the district financially to transition that back to state general funds, as the summer school expenses are reimbursed 100% through the TOSA formula in subsequent years, and that freed up that funding for the retention stipends and other activities in the ESER II grant program. As I noted, we have submitted all reimbursement requests for the ESER II grant program, and NDE is currently reviewing the final claim and has submitted requests for additional information and supporting invoices. The ESER III grant program is a very heavy lift moving forward. We have a significant amount of funds to fully execute on by September 30 through obligating them and then liquidating those obligations before January 31, 2025. We anticipate that we will be fully able to meet those obligations, but there are some challenges ahead of us. We do have some fluctuations in what we originally presented to you as a budget and what we are now expecting to expend on some of the projects. We are currently working on identifying how we can address some of the shortfalls in certain programs and utilize the surpluses in other programs at this point in time. We anticipate there's approximately $8.19 million at risk, unobligated funds that we originally budgeted for an activity that we don't think we will need that much money for. So we are working on identifying opportunities to reallocate those funds over the next 60 to 90 days and anticipate that we will bring you a revised final, and I'll use air quotes, as things could change between now and September 30, but we anticipate in late March, early April, that we would bring a final budget presentation for you on the ESER grant funds for your approval and submission to NDE to fully allocate those funds. Some of the opportunities we're looking at are any turnkey projects in facilities upgrades that would beat the ESER requirements that the operations staff and Mr. Wakefield would be able to execute. And we're also looking at staff technology specifically in the school buildings for teachers and paras, and also additional equipment for the computer science curriculum that is currently being reviewed and considered for adoption. So those are some opportunities where we feel that we'll be able to utilize the funds fully within the timeframe allotted. Executing on $300 million added to the budget over a period of 24 to 36 months is an extremely heavy lift. We have striven to be very prudent in what we've brought forth to the board as projects to utilize the ESER fund, focusing on how the money can most fully benefit the students, staff retention, update curriculum, and keep the hardware and the one-to-one student-to-device ratio post ESERS and continue that commitment. As I indicated, we'll anticipate bringing you a budget amendment and to utilize the $8.18 million that we feel is at risk in February or March. Final budget amendment submitted to the board on the March 18 meeting or the April 1 meeting. We do expect to fully expend the $194 million by September 30. And there is a potential and a provision in the law that for capital expenditure projects such as facility renovations, the opportunity to request an 18-month waiver. We have been in contact with the Nebraska Department of Education to inquire how that works and what the approval process looks like. They have forwarded us the guidance on what needs to be done if we feel that is necessary, and we are monitoring the progress of those projects. And per guidance from NDE, we'll make an initial request in March or April if we feel any of the projects are at risk of not being completed within the original deadline. Unfortunately, based on the extensions that were provided in ESER II under the same legislation, there are not opportunities to expand the runway on curriculum adoptions or staff retention stipends. Those activities can only be performed during up to the September 30, 2024 deadline. Capital facility projects and recognition of the supply chain issues that the economy had and the reduced skilled workforce to complete those projects is the only waiver that has been approved by the U.S. Department of Education at this point in time. With that, I would ask, thank you for your time and answer any questions you would have.
Thank you. Questions, colleagues? Ms. Erdnberger?
Thank you, President Head. If I remember correctly, there is a set percentage of our ESERS money that we're supposed to spend on academics. And so I think I know what it is, but at risk of getting it wrong. Could you remind us what that percentage is? And I think that you have a rough guess of how much we've actually spent on academics.
Yes, Ms. Erdnberger. The SR3 grant program requires that 20% of it be spent on academic recovery at a minimum. We are currently projecting approximately 40% of the $194 million being spent on academic recovery, the majority of that in the area of curriculum adoption, with the adoption of five new curriculums, excuse me, six new curriculums for secondary English language arts, elementary science, K-12 art, a whole new virtual school curriculum, English as a second language curriculum, and K-12 computer science curriculum.
Part of me is glad you had that list. Part of me is afraid it looks like we had canned this question ahead of time. My other question is, what is the process for deciding on your ESERS III grant? You said that, you know, things that you're currently considering is more technology for teachers, the unfunded mandate represented by our computer science curriculum that we are required to offer, but school districts throughout the state are trying to figure out how to accomplish that. And then maybe facilities. It sounds like you said facilities might get an extra oomph because they are eligible for this waiver, but in any event, how do you decide those three? What's the process you're gonna use for deciding where that approximately $8 million is gonna be allocated?
So we are monitoring spend rate on activities that we think are at risk where we won't fully utilize those funds. And then I'm in communication with Mr. Wakefield, Ms. Christopherson, and other individuals throughout the district, Mr. Dunn and the IMS department, to identify opportunities where we might be able to turn around some activities that would comply with the ESER grant within the September 30 deadline.
Will we be invited to the arm wrestling event that occurs between those three departments?
I will try and referee that and then bring you the final presentation.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mr. Tealyn?
Thank you, Mr. Head. I know that we're feeling a little pressure here towards the end, but I do want to thank you, first of all, for the presentations that you've given all along the way. They've been very informative, keeping us up to date on a lot of the important factors about how we're spending and when there's updates that are necessary in keeping us up to date and giving us time to consider those. So this has been a very good process overall and a real model, I think, of how we as a board administration communicate and pass information. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Ms. Foal?
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Ryan. I was curious to learn a little bit more about the retention stipends and if we have been able to have the opportunity to receive feedback from teachers or if we have measured if the stipends that we've already given out have been actually effective at retaining the teachers.
I am unaware of any survey or direct inquiry with any of our labor partners on whether or not the retention stipend was a factor and whether or not a staff member stayed or chose to leave the district. We are fully committed to continuing the stipends. We are changing the format of them with our most recent three-year agreements that we've reached with the majority of our labor partners. We have intentionally built that stipend into the pay scale directly, beginning with the 24-25 school year, knowing that the tight labor market that we face, not only here in Omaha but throughout the nation for teachers and qualified individuals, compensation is something that is vitally important and a factor for individuals wanting to stay with the district or choosing the district when they come out of school or choose to make a change between school buildings or school districts, excuse me. But I would be unaware of any direct evidence of whether or not the stipend helped with the retention at this point in time.
Okay. And you said we will continue the stipends. Will we even continue it after these ESER funds run out, so after September of 2024?
Yes, Ms. Foal. As I stated, we included the stipend in the base salary schedules, beginning in the 24-25 school year. They won't be presented discreetly, but staff, in the negotiated agreements, the beginning wage for the 23-24 school year is much less than the beginning wage in the 24-25 school year, and that's a function of us adding the stipend into the base pay scale beginning in 24-25.
Okay. Thank you. One more question. Is there anything other than the teacher stipends that we would consider using these ESER funds for to retain teachers?
We did initially have student-teacher, excuse me, teacher-pipeline development activities included in the ESER program, but due to the, I'll call it onerous nature of the federal procurement processes, we had to unfortunately remove those activities from the ESER grant funding as we were unable to come to consensus with NDE and the U.S. Department of Ed about sole source and a waiver for procurement activities. So we've committed to continuing the student-teacher academy for the original cohort through their career, and we have had some discussions in the administration about potentially continuing that in the future with general funds. But the advanced academics for teachers and teacher training and the procurement processes required to have an RFP for those services make it a little onerous to use these federal grant funds in our particular circumstances. Other state departments of education have been much more lax than that. The U.S., or excuse me, the Nebraska Department of Education is fairly conservative on their approach to administering grant programs.
Okay. And you said we would potentially continue those teacher cohorts through our general funds? Was that correct? I'm sorry.
So we will continue the original cohort through their college career, using both ESER and general funds, and there have been some discussions about potentially restarting the student-teacher academy in future years.
Using general funds?
Using general funds. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Also, as a reminder, we used ESER's funds to pay for student-teacher stipends as well?
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
And while I have the mic, there was no arm wrestling. The teams worked diligently and very well together to sift through all this, and I just couldn't let the visual of arm wrestling stay.
That's okay, or do you want to go first?
We'll read. You want me to go?
Oh, are we continuing the student-teacher stipends for the foreseeable future?
It's similar to the discussion with the teacher-scholar's cohort or academies. We'll have to figure out how it fits into the general fund budget, so it'll be part of the budget process for the upcoming school year.
Okay. Thank you.
You had identified some of the restrictions, and I don't know if this is a question for you or some of the other staff, but is there money available for special education and/or transportation through this fund?
So we have utilized some of the ESER dollars for special education activities. We already receive existing federal funding through the Individuals with Disability Education Act grant funds on an annual basis and the reimbursement from the state of Nebraska, which is increasing this year for special education expenditures. So it was not as big of a priority from a fiscal sense to fit into the ESER grant program. There's always, we always strive to do the most that we can for our special education students, but the funding that we have continuously received over the past years from both state and federal sources goes a long ways towards those programs, knowing that special education teachers are an even scarcer commodity than teachers in general. Unfortunately, that does curtail some of the activities and usage of the funds, but we have identified some areas where we utilize the ESER funds for special education purposes. Excuse me. We have not utilized any of the ESER funds specifically for transportation outside of the staff stipends to the transportation employees. Again, we receive funding from the state based on route mileage and actual expenses as part of the TOSA formula, and our fleet capacity is generally budgeted through the depreciation fund for the district. And with the supply chain timelines with buses and the procurement requirements on that, it also made that a little impractical. It's about a 12- to 18-month timeline from the time you actually submit a purchase order for a bus until we receive it. And Mr. Wakefield can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? All right, seeing none, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Moving on, item J one B, the Accountability Committee update. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Okay, so first, I just wanted to thank the Accountability Committee for the work that you've been doing throughout the entire process. Work on the superintendent search does continue. The job posting will remain open and it will close January 16, 2024. The search firm says some have already been started and completed. For confidentiality, the search firm receives all applications. They will thoroughly review them before bringing semifinalists to the board. The Accountability Committee is working on a schedule for next steps after the job closes. This is based on our superintendent search timeline. The complete superintendent search schedule approved by our board is posted online, and the latest information will always be sent directly to staff and families by email and posted on OPS.org. The Accountability Committee is also working on the interim superintendent's evaluation. State statute requires that we evaluate the interim superintendent twice this school year. This fall, the board approved goals with Mr. Ray. twice this school year. This fall, the board approved goals with Mr. Ray that guide the evaluation, and data connected to those goals will be brought to the board members in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, colleagues? Ms. Foll.
Thank you. I was wondering, Mr. Smith, could you, has the recruiting company let us know how many applications that we've received so far?
Not a concrete number, but they say that, again, they are going to let us know once they identify who the semifinalist is and will the application stand open until January. I think over the breaks, some people may have a time to kind of sit down, vet out, and actually get their applications completed.
Okay. I think it was earlier last month, we had some small group meetings about this, and they were asking board members if we had any feedback about like advertising or like where we should be putting the job posting. And so we had some ideas, at least in our small group. I don't know how the other ones went, but some of the feedback that I gave was it would be helpful for the board to know how many applications are being received kind of in real time so we can know if the advertising that we're doing is sufficient or if we should be exploring other avenues or doing something different. And so I wonder if that would potentially be available for the board sooner rather than later, and by I mean sooner, I mean before January, before the application closes, to know those numbers, just so we could potentially pivot if that's needed.
I can communicate that to the firm.
Okay. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? All right. Seeing none. Moving on to item J1C, the Legislative Committee update, and I'll go ahead and give this one. The committee met December 7. We talked about a number of items. We had an update on, over the last several months, we've had interim superintendent Ray and members of our lobby staff as well as members of the community, sorry, the committee and other members of the board meeting with state senators and other stakeholders. We've met so far with, I believe, just about every state senator who overlaps with OPS as well as a number of other members of the Education Committee and a few others. So thank you to everyone who's been a part of those meetings, committee members, board members, staff, and everyone else. We discussed interim studies, LR 166 specifically, which was Senator Walz's interim study to examine the impact of unfunded mandates on school districts. We talked about LR 220, Senator Brewer, to examine laws governing school security, and also LR 158, which is the Retirement Systems Committee requirement to have a hearing on underfunded pension plans. Outside of that, we spoke a little bit about the Valuation Task Force that's currently meeting. The governor is part of that as well as a number of state senators and a few other stakeholders. They're looking at ways to potentially address the ways that property is valued to impact property taxes. We discussed the Epic Tax Petition Drive, and then just a general conversation about looking forward into the next session starting here in January. So that is all I have for the formal report. I would note as well that Ms. Erdnberger has generously agreed to take over as the next chair of the committee, and so she will be giving these reports going forward, and the next committee meeting is scheduled for January 5. So any questions, colleagues? All right. Seeing none. Item J1D, the OSERS Board of Trustees update. Ms. Erdnberger.
Thank you, President Head. Mr. Head and I are both transition trustees for the OSERS, and Mr. Ryan is the administrator of the OSER program. It will exist for less than a year. It will fully transfer as of September 1 of 2024. I'm sorry. OSERS is going to continue to exist. Don't panic. Breathe. But our responsibility for administering it will have been completely transferred. Okay, Mr. Ryan, you can breathe again. At the meeting that we had last week, Mr. Tyler Cummings, who is the deputy director at Empers, provided an update about the transition. Once we get transferred over, we will be the third-largest plan of the six pension plans that are administered by Empers. We have 150,000 plan members. So it's a pretty big undertaking, which is why it's requiring the hiring of some additional staff members at the Tac Building to get all of the information transferred over. We not only have to migrate, have our computer system talk to the Empers' computer system to transfer over all of the data for back, I don't know, at least 50 years probably. So it's all on the Empers' system, and at the same time, we are scanning and digitizing 12,000 documents. 104,000 pages have already been digitized. I'm trying to remember what they said, 60,000 remaining? Something like that. So the scanning and digitizing of just our documents is pretty time-consuming. We're about four weeks behind in the computer-to-computer migration, but it is within the schedule that was anticipated. It's just not where we would like to be. So for OSERS plan members, you should know that they have anticipated making at least one, maybe two distributions this summer that are matched with, out of Omaha and out of Lincoln, so we can run the program and make sure they both look the same before we send money out. I don't mean to suggest you're getting twice as much money, although if there's a mistake. Oops. I'm sorry, right here. The budget for the program was originally 5.3 million. We estimate that at the current rate and our current expenses, we will come in under budget and on time. Mr. Ryan and a whole team of people meet weekly, in some cases, to make sure all of the different pieces to this transfer are happening as necessary. Last week, Mr. Ryan and others met with the retirement, presented to the retirement committee down in Lincoln. There are eight, how many underfunded pension plans?
Seven.
Oh, there are seven underfunded pension plans in the state, all of which are in Douglas County, and they have to report on a regular basis to the retirement committee what their current funding is and what their plan for meeting their obligations is. And they went over the, at a second meeting, went over the state auditor's report. Mr. Ryan provided testimony and answered questions, and there will be two potential pieces of legislation that I'll get to watch over. One is to appoint a non-voting OSERS member to the Public Employment Retirement Board. Hopefully, that'll be fast-tracked through the legislature so it can be, that person can be in place before the full transfer takes place, administrative transfer takes place, on the 1st of September. And currently, in order for any of the plan members to attend a seminar, a retirement seminar, they have to be 50 or older, it is probable that that age requirement will be struck so that our new teachers can start attending retirement seminars right off the bat if they have a sub. Right, Mr. Wakefield? And we're, I think that's everything we went over. I can't remember when the next meeting's going to be. Do you? I'm sorry.
I believe it is March 8.
Okay. Keep an eye out for that because we are reporting and covering pretty vital information as we get down to the last six months before we transfer administration of the OSERS to Empers. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, colleagues? All right. Seeing none. There's two recent reports on the agenda this evening. Item K1, the Educational Benefit Eligibility Report for 2022, 2023, 2024, and Item K2, the Head Start Monthly Board Report for October 2023. Moving to closed session. Mr. Smith for a motion?
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the interim superintendent, interim secretary to the board, and legal counsel, negotiations, and legal advice.
All right. We have a motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Teal. Any discussion? Seeing none. Dr. McFarland, please call the roll.
Holman.
Aye.
War, sorry, Crackey. Smith.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Foll.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Aid Aye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest, for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the interim superintendent, interim secretary of the board, and legal counsel, negotiations, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:16 PM.